May here, may president.
Here.
Um, here.
Here.
I would like to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion for consent agenda, move to the second.
Motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Hope they can put this time and place where items are on the agenda, ten minutes, three minutes each. Be Lisbon grant announcement. Yellow is soon up to you.
That's me. That's what came. Hi, everybody.
How you doing?
Hello. My name's Joe Jensen. I'm the director of Main Street and Marketing for the Mount Vernon Lisbon Community Development Group. I have been asked to work with you all on this, be business enhancement Lisbon competition for two oh three. As many of you know, I've been working on a similar grant in Mount Vernon called the Open for Business Grant. And so this was kind of modeled after that. There are some important things to consider. Any business within the six limits of Lisbon is welcome to apply for this. Home based businesses are not eligible, however. You gotta be eighteen years old, you gotta be a resident of Iowa. City of Lisbon staff elected officials are not eligible. And CDG volunteers working on this particular project would not be eligible. So just know that. I have put together a little committee to help with judging. One of the business owners in Lisbon, one of this in the past, is happy to sit on that. I'll be on that, Brandon will be on that. And then Casey Carl from Main Street is willing to be on that, too. And we have room for one more. If any one of you guys want to be on that, you'd be most welcome. Just let me know. The part of this that I think is important, this is meant to help local business grow their business, as well as help Lisbon become a stronger community. That's similar to the reason Open for Business started. And we've had a lot of success with that over there. And I hope we get some businesses to apply. So the money is five thousand dollars. It comes from the city of Lisbon. And then they would have to put in twenty-five percent. So what would that be? Six thousand one hundred twenty-five dollar total project, right? You can use the, you can purchase these things, marketing remodeling signage, equipment inventory, but it's not to cover rent, utilities, vehicles, payroll, normal operating expenses. It's really meant to help expand or grow your business. And I think it'll be a great thing. I hope we get some businesses to apply. You have until October twenty-seventh to get an application to us and get it to Brandon. There is just five questions on this application. And it's, you know, they're essay. It can be as verbose or as limited as you'd like, but you gotta get your point across. If you would like a Word document that you can manipulate on the website, it's PDF. If you pick up a copy here, you might wanna get another piece of paper or type out the answers, because there's not a lot of room to write. But anyway, you can contact us and we can get you a Word document. You can manipulate it on your own computer. So that's what I know. Any questions?
Any questions for Joe? You look.
Thank you.
God bless and thank you.
President, can you put that on that?
Already done.
Thanks. Discussion possible action in reference to pay estimate number five to BG Brecki for the water main improvements in the amount of four thousand sixty thousand eight hundred sixteen dollars and eighty cents. Any questions for Dave?
This is a progress payment, covered work to date. We reviewed this, recommend approval of one hundred eight thousand eight hundred sixteen dollars eight cents.
What?
Where are they in the whole process?
Sixty-nine percent.
But as far as remaining work, they have to do some work on South Jackson yet. They haven't started that stretch, South Business Thirty. They're above to South Street.
Just above.
Just above South Street. And they have to go down Business Thirty, on the over. They also have a connection over on Washington Street at South Street. They have to make it across there. Once they get those done, they're pretty close, so.
I mean, just from my situation, I know that the piping went in months ago. I don't have the finished grade, the plucked grass, anything. And they drove by yesterday and wait. But that hasn't been done yet. So I'm not gonna have, I'm not gonna have finished grass on that this year.
Yeah, there will be some places. Our completion date was July. We're trying to get as much of that done as we can when they are able to get it completed. But if they have to come back and still connect services and they're going to dig that area up yet, we wouldn't see that just to come back and tear it up. So they have service connections to make in quite a good place, even though they have Manion and just a few remaining items, such as that tying in on Washington that they have to get done. So there's, there's still work they have to do. And until they get everything completed on the section, they don't want to see just to spend money. They want to make sure they have it deployed.
Any motion?
I make a motion to pay Brecki in the amount of what has been missed for.
Second. Motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close. Discussion possible action in reference to change order number four for water main improvements in the amount of negative five thousand two hundred forty-two dollars and...
This is for the two crossings of Business Thirty. We originally planned for those to be open tight. And they were able to come in and directional board those. And I have to do the service restoration. So when we look at the total cost, it was a net savings to the city and it was less deduction. So Brandon had discussed that with us earlier on. Since it was a cost savings, we elected to get that done. It's been done for about a month now.
Why don't we make it one more second? Any motion due?
I make a motion for the change order for water main.
Second. Motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close. Discussion possible action in reference to sports complex.
I just wanted to bring some items to your attention. Just a little bit of history on the soccer field area. The Dave Schmidt construction seeded that down last fall. They were about a week outside the window, a week late getting that in. Didn't grow very well. I met them out there this spring in May. They agreed to have a company come in and double seed it, fill in the washouts, that type of stuff. So they went ahead and did that. They were at it that it needed water. So we went out and bought the hoses and the sprinklers and grated and watered it religiously. And so I've been out there. I took Lynn County Co-op and Ground Hustle out there to look at it. There's a lot of weeds, lots and lots of weeds, not a lot of grass. A lot of the weeds took all the moisture. There's like one weed that's, it's got one single root, but it's canopy's like this on the ground. So when you lift it up, you can see what grass tried to grow and it's just not getting the sunlight and everything. So I'm trying to, as this window, seeding window closes, trying to figure out a plan so that way we can use this facility in the spring or fall next year. Dave Schmidt has sent a bill for twelve thousand two hundred ninety-two dollars. This includes some matting, silt fence, and then the seeding the second time. I'm working with them on, I talked to them today. I think we can come to some common ground on there to not pay them the second seed. So instead of twelve two ninety-two, I think they'll come to forty-two hundred ninety-one dollars and sixty-eight cents. And that's gonna be just to do the silt fence work that is completed, the mobilization which was done. And, or install the matty in the draw off area between Meyer Memorial and soccer field. So that works legit. That works done. There's really no way around that. But I would like to get approval from you guys, if they're good with it, to accept the soccer fields as they are and get in there and spray the weeds and have our local contractor do an area and a double seed like we did at the park and move forward. Because I think this is gonna turn into a long drawn out ordeal. I don't think they're gonna come in and redo it. Pursuit us, you have to have, for acceptance, it's gotta be good established grass in order for us to accept it. I don't know when that's gonna be and we're just gonna keep delaying this forever and ever. And I think, after talking to Lisa, talked a little bit to Dave, to the attorney, I think we're gonna be money ahead doing it that route. But I wanted to bring it to you guys to see if you had any questions or objectives or what your, you'd like to say.
I don't know probably, as long as they will drop their second seeding cost. It's gonna probably cost us that down. Who's doing that? Who does that? Emroll?
Our, people.
Okay. These guys are good? Jordans? I mean, it's gonna cost us front of that, before Jordans come in. But I mean, the only way that I feel comfortable is that they drop the second seeding. And then, I don't care. I mean, I feel comfortable. I have a Jordan, I mean, he's always, he takes responsibility. I mean, I'm responsible. He takes on pride. Probably one of you guys.
I know that, I don't know if any of you noticed, but we had a recruitment Charlie in the park last year that the whole thing was burnt brown. And like they, I know they came in and that's been the nicest grass we have. Obviously, it's dry over there now outside of that, but, I don't know. I'm just trying to...
What would be the difference if you hired received it?
We did it the first time. So they hired received it the first time and it didn't grow. So then the second time they leveled out, there was some washouts because they hit with silt fence in. So they came in with dirt, leveled everything out, hit it with a, like a spike roller. And they got the bed ready. And then that time they hit it, it actually had a drill seater.
Yeah, we hired received it, mulched everything. We're just, we were waiting. We just get told, but just keep waiting, just keep waiting. I think we can't keep waiting. Work's to establish.
Right. Our window's gonna be closed.
Yeah.
I will say that out there, it is a nice surface. I mean, Graton Moses, it's by far and away better than the north side, which is expected. So there shouldn't be any type of, you know, there might be a hole here, here or there that we'll have to deal with. But it is a nice surface. We just gotta get the weeds out of there and get this new seed on and then hopefully it's gonna grow.
Have you talked to Magreen about what their costs would be?
I did not. I didn't wanna, let it go on until I got this decision, so.
Well, then they guarantee.
Well, that's the thing with seeding, there's, you know, Pursuit Us, it says right in there. But, I mean, they could say like, well, we'll have to wait for that. It could be three years for that grass to completely mature before we accept it. Well, you know, you start...
Well, I guess I'd like to see it up through the ground, is what I'm, what I'm talking about. It doesn't have to be finished product, but if it doesn't grow, period.
There's grass out there, but there's water grass, there's plantain weed that's regenerating the moisture. And there's all kinds of different weeds out there. There is some grass. I mean, there's no doubt that it was, it was seeded and it did come in better.
Okay, with all of that, with all that mixtures of grasses, what's the plan? They're not gonna just seed, period, are they? Are they gonna try and kill some of the other?
Yeah.
They're gonna kill weeds like Brandon said. They're gonna kill the weeds first.
We kill everything above the grass. There's a, there's a chemical you can use that will kill everything but the grass. So any grasses that are there...
I've never found that chemical, but I'm sure there is.
It exists, I've used it.
The broad weeds, the water grasses. Yeah, the water grass. Water grass, probably the fox tails there. But that stuff will also die first in the fall. So the thought is, if we can get some growth, then that takes over in the spring.
But the plan would be kill weeds, aerate, replant.
Water.
And water that up.
Not doing this much good the way it is. I'd be in favor of...
Would you?
I'd be in favor of...
Well, you're, you're looking for...
Yeah, I just look for...
Most of bids for the seeding.
We can, yeah, and I can get that put together for the next meeting. But what I'm looking for is to disconnect from, accept this, as long as we don't have to pay.
Just the south side.
Just four seeding minutes. We still punchless and we still have full proper closure up, just this.
So you're looking for a motion to continue getting bids on the seeding and removing of the weeds if Dave Schmidt is willing to take out the second seeding? And we pay only four thousand whatever, right?
Forty-two ninety-one.
And we move past Dave Schmidt and the local.
That'll be in the next one.
You don't have to approve the four thousand something. That'd be in the...
The next, okay. Okay. We just need, we need a motion to disconnect from Dave Schmidt on the seeding, we're gonna go up weeds.
I'll make a motion to proceed as Brandon has described.
I second that motion.
Motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close. Do you know what to do?
I, so will this happen at the baseball stuff, do you?
Well, baseball, she's actually got the design concepts to me. She is hoping that that'll be ready for bid, hopefully in a month or so.
No, I mean weeds, what it is.
They're, that's all gonna get graded anyway.
And we didn't have that problem up there, not to the south.
On the, on the south part that they seeded, like from the first silt fence down we did.
To the curb line.
But the north is just, it's actually all grass, but it's very spotty. But that's all gonna get graded, like the whole landscape, that'll be graded. So it's not as, only part that's bad is knowing it.
Well, do we, you know, we're gonna regrade it. They're gonna regrade it and they're gonna preseed it. I mean, do we have, take the seeding out for them and give another company come in, do seeding?
This is, the ball field should be completely done by a completely separate contractor.
Okay, good.
We specialize in baseball fields.
Yes.
The north side is, as is...
The north side was seeded purely to meet erosion control requirements, knowing we were gonna rip it out. So it has met that goal.
And it would die for a while.
All right. Anybody else have any questions?
Yep.
When will a completed project be useful to the citizens of...
April seventeenth.
You know that? You wanna write that down?
I'm hoping that the south side, I don't, I'm not gonna guarantee the spring, but it'll be hopefully the fall of next year, the south side.
There's a lot of elements that go into that, and that's weather.
I just don't wanna put, if you got grass, it's just something like this. I don't wanna put a bunch of kids out there, please tearing it up and it doesn't destroy. I mean, just, weather's gonna be the big, the late fall and an early spring. There's a chance, that's it.
I mean, we're in a hurry for it, but we're not in a hurry for it. I mean, we gotta...
Discussion possible action in reference to well five improvements. Dave?
Yes, I did hand out your, this yellow piece of paper, the levels, they all have that, so.
So we did receive all of our test results back. Next, the results from the tests that were required to take for any well, state mandates. So we picked these tests and all of the other ones are good. Ones that are shaded light tan are fine, but they're just a little bit elevated from what we'd expect. And the ones that are orange, iron magnes, those are pretty common. They're a sore enough for at various levels. They're right at the point where we would wanna do some treatment. We could potentially put canofers or try to dequest for that or keep it in concentration. But magnes, they don't have a lot of velocity. They do deposit and then when you flush, you get the red water. Or if you're pretty magnes, you get the black water. When you flush the magnes, if somebody happens to be using the water while you're stirring things up during flushing, that gets into the plumbing. Those are all normal. The one that's highlighted in red, that level is significantly higher than we would expect to see. And in talking with the laboratory, it's above what they have seen anywhere else in the state. So recommended that we retest. The quotes that you saw in there, along with the change order that I requested from Co-op, the company that did the well, that seemed pretty high to me. So I'm recommending we just close the project out. And I also asked Northway to give us a quote and they were significantly less, more aligned with what we'd expect to see for their cost to do the well testing. And that also gives us a different contractor that has different equipment. We wouldn't wanna stick the same well rig out there to the same pump if there was potential contamination. They have to go to a pump somewhere else for test pumping. This gets us a completely different test setup. And if we get a result that is more than what we'd expect, we have some reason to believe that it was dental outside of the water source that contaminated that sample. I did talk to laboratory to find out if maybe the test procedure would have left it out. And he said this is the highest he's seen. So obviously, he went through and retested it multiple times himself to make sure that he hadn't messed something up and calibrated their flowing and all that stuff. He went through the test again. So the sample that we have, this is the result. But I'm just saying that he doesn't know necessarily if the sample is representative of the water if there's potential cross contamination. So my recommendation at this point is, we just go ahead and close out the contract. Always complete the allegation and we'll move on and do a second water sample to submit and retest for that item, along with a few others that we wanna try to get a little bit better tolerance as it relates to the wastewater plant limits. It's fine for drinking water, but sometimes just to look at what happens once it goes on the wastewater plant. You have hydrolytes on the wastewater ironically and then you wanna drink the water.
So what it is then?
What it is, it's just a naturally occurring element. So there's, there's a few different things that can lead to that. Normally, it's in there from, the high levels are from a mining operation or something like that or the photocopies, they use this stuff. And it tends to be in a landfill type of each, if you have something like that. We don't have either of those in this area. So agriculture runoff has a potential, usually not at this level. So we're thinking more than likely, we'll retest, we should see lower levels. Fortunately, the treatment that we've used for iron magnes also works for this. So we're right at that threshold where we have water quality issues with iron magnes that if we could put it in, we might see some reduction in water quality. Obviously, there's a cost to doing treatment that isn't there with just putting chlorine in there and fluoride. So we wanna make sure that we're getting this right before we go to the next step, which is why we come off to this point. So once we get the retest, if it comes out good, we'll probably have them leave that pump in there so we can take two samples and send them both in and have some validation that the second sample's correct. Otherwise, one's right, one's high. It's, which one's actually right? So if we get two of them, that one to confirm the other, then we can be reasonably sure that we don't have that issue. But with the funds of caution, recommending that we get another sample. We make sure that the levels are correct before we take any action. And we have a pretty good price on the second quote that we received in order to get that done. So recommending that we proceed on that.
So they're not, they're not gonna test everything on this list? They're gonna test for those nine things?
Yes.
Your motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the retest. Second sound.
Close it with the other.
Second.
And, and the closure of the, of this contract.
Motion, a second, don't we? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Discussion possible action in reference to fiscal year twenty-three audit review.
So we had the auditors here who talked about last time. You have the report in front of you. Leave your skin, you sent it out, the whole report.
And I have a copy here if anybody wants to look at it.
So as you see, the, everything went really well. The only deficiencies is segregation duties. And that's on here every single time, just because of our population and we don't have enough people here working to segregate those duties. So this will probably always be on there. It always has, from the ones I haven't seen. As you can see, our response will continue to review and monitor ways to improve segregation duties and they accept that. So, I don't know if you have any questions or if you've seen the report, but the full thing is in your email if you want to read some.
Just made us to approve it?
Yeah.
Your motion to approve the audit?
Motion to approve the audit.
Second.
The motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close. So public hearing in reference to change, changes to ordinance one seventy and fifty-six gradeways.
So we came into this issue during this project that when they added rebar to the section of sidewalks that talked about driveways, as it's put into the ordinance book, it only deals with sidewalks in the driveway, not the actual driveway. So what we've done before I got here and since I've been here is anyway that's putting in a driveway from the sidewalk to the street, they had to put rebar in. And so it's not technically the right place or it wasn't put in the right place. So this is just a set of public hearing. I'd like to do it for October twenty-third to add that to the driveway section, so that's clear.
So for the driveways, who would inspect that?
Travis or I could go on and inspect it.
Your motion, put that for October twenty-third.
Make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Correspondents?
I don't have anything.
So the engineering report?
Don't have anything additional, but if anybody has any questions, then have a...
Completion dates on our current projects?
The well project has...
The town.
Town. I mean, they basically got every corner of it torn up some way or another.
So we're anticipating that they're going to continue on Jackson, try to get that done on the north side of Business Thirty and then over and try to, and we'll get the intersection paved on Main and Jackson. Come back over, work on Washington Street to get that pavement done. And they'll be free to work on South Jackson, on water main installation at that point. End of October, we should be pretty close.
End of October, you should have all this pavement and stuff down here and... Anyone else want to do for Dave?
Thanks.
No, thank you for going over that again.
Hope this worked.
Nothing tonight.
First one.
Well, I also don't have much. Just Halloween Town will be October thirty-first. So the next meeting, I'll have road closures and stuff on for that. And we're going into our third week of games for flag football and soccer. So we got three weeks left. And then we're gonna do girls, girls and boys' basketball.
Please permit. Anybody anything for Dave? Please permit.
Nothing beyond, what's up with your report?
You have most?
I don't have any for that today.
Fire chief?
Nothing fire department related.
So you're sure?
Just a little bit further on the water main schedule. To Mike's question about Second Avenue seeding, hopefully in the next ten days or so, that'll get tilled up and seeded along that street. Also, seal coating, chip and dip, some people call it, will start. They did the work today to fill in the holes and some patchwork. So they're doing First Avenue, Second Avenue, Third Avenue, Fourth Avenue that should be completed towards the end of the week. Also, as they get close to the park, I did talk to Brecki today. They're gonna work with us and make sure that each evening, everything's backfill. Other than right where they're working, we'll make sure we have the concrete barriers around there so that the flag football and soccer won't have any issues there. So they're aware of that. So the school, I gotta meet with them tomorrow, reference the final plan for their construction project. Planning and zoning has accepted, or recommended acceptance of that. There's one issue that's, this building is gonna be, is it five feet, six feet?
Yeah, four or five feet.
Four to five feet away from the water main. So we always like to have ten feet. So P and Z recommends to move forward with the acceptance with the acknowledgement that if the water main ruptures, they're aware how close it is to the building. Also, that if it does rupture, we'll have to fix it. And then they're gonna be responsible for moving that water main at that time out of the street. So we have a meeting tomorrow with the school to go over this with their facilities people to see if they wanna possibly address this prior to the project or how they wanna do that. But we need to get a letter. I know Mark's been involved with this, Dave's been involved. So just kinda let you know. with this, Dave's been involved, um, so, just kinda let you know, um, it is a possibility, um, if this all gets worked out before the next meeting, they have their construction crew on scene doing some demolition, but they're ready to start progressing to as far as the building, um, I may, um, ask for a special council meeting, I'll try to get a quorum, um, sometime during the day, um, over the course of the next couple of weeks if, if need be, but just, uh, I'll, I'll communicate with everybody for that, so I just wanna give a heads up. Siding arrived for City Hall, so the, the Niche, Chief Board siding outside, um, as you recall, that's a, a warranty item that's, that they have delivered it all here, so, um, I'll get a, gonna get a call this weekend to Joe to see when he'll be back and get the, um, siding up for that. City Hall sidewalk, um, that should be wrapped up in the next couple of weeks, as you can see, there's fresh concrete poured today, now we'll take the two stalls out because of how the ADA has to come down the sidewalk, the parking stalls are actually higher than the sidewalk, so we gotta take those two stalls out, uh, that's all part of the plan, but, um, so that's the next thing. We had a construction company here today to look at the, do some silicone work, or give a bid for silicone work on top of the roof of the library that's been leaking, um, also the history center in the corner by the downspout that had the tin, um, come loose, and then the actual downspout that goes from the north side of the upper wall, and goes down the wall into the block, so they're gonna be getting a bid for that. Lisbon Historic Preservation is gonna have a dedication to the Lincoln Highway sign that's been installed down at, uh, Lincoln Square, that's gonna be Friday, October sixth at five P M, uh, so if anybody's around, I'll probably send out a reminder email to let you guys know that that's going on. Then I sent the email out about the, um, union contract in the handbook, we'll need to, uh, I'd like to have a work session, uh, to go over some of that, for policies, um, on the ninth, would be the, prior to the next meeting at six thirty, if that's at all possible, um, hopefully get those policies put into the handbook that are in the contract, does that work for everybody?
Yes.
That's for me.
Okay, and I'll put a reminder out for that as well, and then, um, we still have a few stumps and some seeding areas and some graves to touch up that we'll try to get done in this new window as well, so, and then just wanna thank for all the staff, I know that, uh, with the water main and everything going on, they're, they're running around, and, uh, I appreciate all of it, I'll take any questions you have.
So you're gonna, can you guarantee come Halloween Town, we won't have any gravel downtown?
Guarantee, no, um, I think that's the goal, but, uh, I don't know what he's going to do here.
I, I know that that was already discussed, and it, and it was, uh, we felt pretty good, moving forward, so we'll see, I think the sign will be, is when, cause when they, um, tie this main in from Methodist Church to downtown, when does that hole get filled in?
That hole will get filled in when we get the services, two services hooked up, so that's two, I was asking.
So I think tomorrow they're doing services, so, uh, cause then Wednesday they're gonna go back to seeding, so, um, if those get done, that can get filled in, and then their plan is then to tear out that intersection, and they're using a paver, and the paver's gonna be here for Jackson and for Washington, so we wanna make sure that Jackson gets cured and it's drivable, so we have our way in and out of town to the north, um, and they're gonna wanna do it pretty quick to get Washington done because the paver's gonna be here, so I don't think it's gonna be an issue, um, but we'll just have to play it by ear and see how it goes.
Do you have else anything for Brandon? Counsel, me?
I don't have anything to...
Mike?
Link?
Oh, no. Yeah?
Uh, there's gonna be a free concert at the end of Heritage Hall on the Saturday, the thirtieth at eleven A M, it'll be Red Cedar, the String Group, and there's a leadership breakfast at Cornell on the fifth at seven thirty in the morning, if you're going to that, you'll need a creditor debit card, they don't take cash anymore, that's all I have.
Sure.
I don't have anything.
I don't have anything. Christina?
Uh, just to remind my district counsel that, uh, quite a few people, the staff have reached some anniversaries lately, uh, Amy has hit thirty-plus years, uh, Chris Rodman just had his recently, Martha just had hers recently, and then Brandon and I are hitting our, um, busy season with budget workshops, tip workshops, and we'll be in and out of the office quite a bit the next two months for requirements for our positions, so.